Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilman Sharland.
Would the folks from Suicide Prevention Month come up? Good morning. So, this is an organization I got involved with last year here. Found out something we hadn't recognized yet was Suicide Prevention Month. So, this is the second year that we've done this. I'd like to make it a regular occurrence, something that I think is important to all of us, and we've all had some experiences here. So, whereas the city of Pittsburgh recognizes that suicide is preventable and advocates for, advocates support for evidence-based mental health services based on goals in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention, and whereas suicide, or Pennsylvania matches the nationwide ranking of suicide as 11th, the 11th leading cause of death, with 1,885 lives lost through suicide in the Commonwealth in 2021, and in 2020, 2023, an estimated 12.8 million adults aged 18 years or older reported having serious thoughts of suicide, and 1.5 million adults attempted suicide in the past year. And over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and potentially treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas everyone has a role to play in preventing suicide and dismantling the negative attitudes surrounding mental health awareness, and can learn suicide risks and warning signs in order to encourage those who struggle to seek help. And whereas Pittsburghers benefit from wonderful mental health-oriented organizations and efforts such as the Positive Painting Project, Steel Smiling, Artist Talk Mental Health, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, Western PA Chapter, that envision a world without suicide and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected. And whereas a signature event in these dark efforts, or in these, in these, sorry, in these local efforts, is the AFSP Western PA Chapter's annual Out of the Darkness Walk, which occurs this year on September 7th, 2025, featuring community advocates, activities, resources, and connections. And now therefore be it resolved that we seek to recognize September as Suicide Prevention Month, elevate our local organizations, reducing stigma around suicide and mental health and disparate outcomes for marginalized communities, and develop the, and implement strategies to increase access to and delivery of quality mental health, substance use, and suicide prevention, crisis care and treatment, and recovery services, and be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize September as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Alexander Gray. I am the advocacy chair of the Western PA Chapter of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. I'm just so honored to get the support of the council, especially Councilman Sharland. It's really appreciated, and we just hope as an organization to fight for a world without this horrible thing, suicide. So, thank you so much. It's deeply appreciated.
And next we'll have Councilman Mosley.
Mr. President, would the family of Sherri Smith come up? Thank you for joining us on a short notice, on a solemn occasion. Sherri Smith was one of my big supporters and a great mentor, and, you know, we recently lost her, and so it's very fitting to give her these flowers here today, being that she also worked in the District 9 office at one point during her journey. So whereas Sherri Smith, born on September 29th, 1950, in the vibrant and historic Hill District, for over two decades, Ms. Smith has been a committed community leader and advocate, serving as Democratic Committee Woman. And whereas Sherri's work has touched many lives and strengthened the fabric of her community, Ms. Smith's legacy includes being a member of the Homewood Concerned Citizens, Operation Better Block Cluster 5 Group, Secretary of the 13th Ward Democratic Committee, Secretary of Bennett Place Tenant Council, NAACP Pittsburgh Branch, volunteer work at Community Empowerment Association, and Homewood Children's Village. And whereas Ms. Smith is the beloved mother of one daughter, Serena Broughton, her family has continued to grow, blessing her with four grandchildren and three great-grandchildren, all of whom she adored and cherished deeply. Family has always been central to Sherri's life, and she took great pride in nurturing and supporting her loved ones. And whereas Sherri Smith's unwavering commitment to her community and her family has left a lasting impact, her legacy of service and leadership continues to inspire those around her, and her contributions have paved the way for future generations to build upon. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 29th, 25, 2025, to be Sherri Smith Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Could members come up for a photo? And Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. All right, well, I have two proclamations. I'd like to do, everyone here from Real Q, please come up. All right, good morning, everyone. So today we have Real Q. It is formerly known as the Pittsburgh Lesbian and Gay Film Society. We are, today we are celebrating the 40th anniversary. So, thank you very much for all your commitment, and I don't imagine you all were here since 1985, right?
I know.
That's awesome. Yeah. Well, with that, we wanted to make sure that we celebrate this moment because, you know, there's so much impact, especially during a time when there wasn't as much visibility. So, with that, whereas Real Q, formerly known as Pittsburgh Lesbian and Gay Film Society, was founded in 1985 by Rich Cummings with the vision of creating a space for authentic LGBTQ+ stories and artists at the time when queer representation in cinema was nearly absent. And whereas what began as a grassroots effort has grown into one of the longest-running LGBTQ+ film festivals in the world, showcasing hundreds of films from across the globe, also nurturing local filmmakers, filmmakers and premiering groundbreaking works. And whereas over the past 40 years, Real Q has amplified LGBTQ+ voices excluded from mainstream media, foster community dialogue, preserve queer history, and shape Pittsburgh's reputation as a hub for queer film and culture. Whereas the festival's longevity is a testament to the dedication of volunteers, artists, sponsors, and audiences who have sustained it, making Real Q not only an arts festival, but also a legacy that enriches Pittsburgh's cultural fabric and stands as a beacon of pride. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does commend Real Q for 40 years of extraordinary contributions to cinema, culture, and LGBTQ+ visibility, and be a further resolve that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, October 3rd, 2025, to be Real Q Film Festival Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I just want to thank everybody for this honor. It has taken hundreds of people and decades of different people to put this festival together every year, and we are the sixth oldest queer film festival in the world in Pittsburgh. That's insane. So, and we will be opening this October 3rd on our Real Q Day at the Andy Warhol Museum, so check us out.
All right, will members come up for a picture? All right, well, everyone from the Five View Step Challenge, please come forward. Come to the front. All right. So, with the anniversaries, we're going to step right into a 30th anniversary here, and this is for the Five View Step Challenge. And just so you all know, I believe that in preparation for that, instead of taking the elevator, they took the stairs here. Is that true? Okay, all right. Some of us are starting our mornings a little better than others. Good. But with that, you know, I can't say enough about this. I believe I was there for the 25th anniversary. We did it on the spot at the, at the overlook, and I think it's great because, number one, there's a couple things that come out of this for me and your community. We get a lot of, you know, capital budget asked for steps to be repaired during this time, because this, this event happens on, what is this? This is over 1,600 steps. And so throughout that journey, I think you all are prepping that prior, and, you know, you're prepping the course, you're looking at the course, and there's different types of maintenance that has to be done and everything. So I appreciate that aspect of it, because it really puts us in check on the city on what we actually need to invest in our, our infrastructure, like, like city steps. And also, people get a glance of all the, all the structures that, I mean, some, some are still being lived in, that people live right off, you know, their only access is the city steps. So I always think that's always interesting and a nice throwback to Pittsburgh's, you know, history. With that, whereas Five View Step Challenge was first organized in 1996 by neighbors Mary Jane Barbush and Judith Harvey, who sought to preserve the neighborhood's historic stairways, promoting community pride and offer both athletic and leisurely participation. And whereas the first event featured a 3.1 mile course with 381 steps, and has since grown into a celebrated annual tradition showcasing over 1,600 steps across 12 public staircases, including the remarkable 371-step ascent up Rising Main Avenue. Whereas, for 30 years, the Step Challenge has been led by neighborhood volunteers drawing participants from across the region to experience Pittsburgh's hillside landscapes, and to support Five View Citizens Council in preserving affordable housing, enhancing neighborhood beauty, and uplifting young people. Whereas the 30th Annual Five View Step Challenge will take place on October 4th, 2025, beginning at the Five View Outlook on Cotoma Street, with both a five-mile competitive course and a two-mile Vista Walk for participants of all abilities. And now, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does commend the Five View Citizens Council and the community of Five View for 30 years of dedication and spirit through the Step Challenge, and be a further resolve that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, October 4th, 2025, to be Five View Step Challenge Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we're going to promote the Step Challenge a little bit here.
I'm DeAndre Johnson, board chair of the Five View Citizens Council, and on behalf of the Five View Citizens Council, our partners in the Perry Hilltop Citizens Council, under the umbrella of our future Hilltop, we are just grateful to accept this award. Not an award, it's recognition, and thankful to City Councilman Bobby Wilson and County Councilman Jordan Mbada as well. For the past 30 years, the Step Challenge has represented just our resilience and as a community, it's been a celebration of sorts, and we'd like to believe that every step brings us closer to just being more of a community. And so these, these Step Challenges represent advocacy and resilience and just a celebration and legacy of the city and neighborhood that we love. We have a lot of steps in Five View. So, come on up this Saturday, October 4th. We're going to have a grand time, still time to register, and just come out and support. And again, we're grateful for this recognition. Matt's going to come up real quick and just talk a little bit about the history.
Thank you, everybody. Councilman Wilson had already mentioned the founders of our Step Challenge, Mary Jane Barbush and Judith Harvey, but I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention some of the tireless volunteers that we've had to run and sustain this race over the years, primarily Diane Malcolm, Carla Arnold, Christine Wispel, Joanna Demming, and an entire host of others. The Five View Step Challenge is a challenge like no other in the city of Pittsburgh. It's five miles of grueling stairs, so come out and join us this Saturday morning if the weather looks beautiful. Thank you all.
Thanks, Matt. And they don't call it Five View for, for nothing. The overlook, where the race starts, is, is quite a, quite a view. So, you know, even if you just want to catch a nice view someday, head on up to Five View. All right, will members come up so we can celebrate this, this event?
And Councilman Kail Smith?
Bishop Zubik, Bishop Ekman, you want to come forward? Boy, did they have a ride today, a treat today getting here. They rode the elevator up with Anthony Coghill and I. They're probably thinking, if ever, we should be stuck in an elevator. It might be right now. Confession. They'd still be there. Do you want to come over a little bit? Just a little bit? Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say, I've been able to work with Bishop Zubik in numerous ways, and I was so proud when he moved to District 2 to serve as the bishop of the city of Pittsburgh. And so I got to meet him at different places in the community and see some of the things that he can do in the community, and it's been amazing. And I actually first, I think, met you through Bruce Kraus, Councilman Kraus, who had a very, you know, close relationship working with you and the Diocese. And, and now I just had the pleasure of attending your installation. So, is this called installation? Yeah. Everybody's called something different. But anyway, and so I'm just excited to work with you moving forward and to see what we can do as I retire, and you retire, maybe we'll start trouble together. Okay? I'm ready. We'll start with Bishop Ekman. Whereas Bishop Mark A. Ekman has devoted his life to the service of God and the people of the Diocese of Pittsburgh, embodying the virtues of faith, humility, and pastoral care throughout his decades of ministry. And whereas he entered priestly formation at St. Paul Seminary in District 2, is a graduate of Duquesne University in Pittsburgh, and receives his Master of Divinity degree from St. Vincent Seminary in Latrobe. And whereas Bishop Ekman was ordained to the priesthood on May 11th, 1985, and has served across multiple South Hills parishes as parochial vicar, and a high school chaplain, pastor, and administrator across multiple South Hills parishes, and was deeply involved in the youth formation of Seton LaSalle and DePaul School for Hearing and Speech. And whereas he was consecrated as auxiliary bishop in 2022, and on July 14th, 2025, Bishop Ekman was installed as the 13th Bishop of Pittsburgh, and embracing the call to shepherd the Diocese with the motto "to serve in faith and charity." And where, charities, that's my favorite one. And whereas Bishop Ekman, most recently served as Vicar General, General Secretary of the Diocese, has held positions on various diocesan and national advisory boards, always striving to uplift others through service and compassion. And whereas known for his love of family, photography, and the outdoors, Bishop Ekman exemplifies spiritual dedication, community leadership, and a deep connection with people he serves. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Bishop Mark A. Ekman for his unwavering dedication to the gospel, his pastoral heart, and his vision for the church united in love and in service. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, to be Bishop Mark A. Ekman Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. It's certainly an honor to be here this day and to be the 13th bishop of the Diocese. As I was reminded, whenever I was made a bishop, it's not just the South Hills, but it's the six counties of Western Pennsylvania. But it's especially nice to be in Allegheny County and to be in the city of Pittsburgh. Come early next year, I'll be living in Oakland, so I think that's right outside of your territory.
I was born and raised on Fifth Avenue, so I'm okay.
But it'll be certainly nice to be able to, to be living there and to be able to continue to minister to the people. So, thank you very much for, for this honor. Thank you.
We'll take photos after we do this. We'll bring everyone up. I'll forgive you for moving to Oakland. It was where I was born and raised, right on Fifth Avenue. So, I always have a love for Oakland, but a little sad you'll leave in District 2. We'll bring you back for other stuff, though. Whereas Bishop David A. Zubik has faithfully served the Catholic Church and the Diocese of Pittsburgh with unwavering devotion, compassion, and integrity for over five decades. And whereas ordained to the priesthood on May 3rd, 1975, and consecrated as bishop on April 6th, 1997, Bishop Zubik has held numerous pastoral and administrative roles, including auxiliary bishop of Pittsburgh, bishop of Green Bay, we'll forgive you for that one, okay? And ultimately was appointed as the 12th bishop of Pittsburgh in 2007 by Pope Benedict. And whereas his leadership extended beyond the Diocese of Pittsburgh, serving on the national and regional boards fostering interfaith dialogue, advocacy, and his steadfast witness in times of both joy and trial. And whereas Bishop Zubik currently serves on numerous boards and committees, including Catholic-Jewish Dialogue, and recently concluded his service as chairman of the Board of Regents, of Regents of St., at St. Vincent Seminary, reflecting his deep commitment to spiritual leadership and community service. And whereas Bishop Zubik has also played active roles in civic organizations such as United Way of Greater Pittsburgh and the Urban League of Greater Pittsburgh, and remains a devoted pastoral leader throughout decades of ministry. And whereas upon his retirement and his, in his new title as bishop emeritus, Bishop Zubik continues to inspire the faithful with his prayer, presence, and enduring love for the church. And whereas his deep concern for the poor, and the marginalized, the young, and the elderly has shaped his ministry and reflected the hearts of Christ to all those who he encountered. And now therefore be it resolved, and I'll say, even this Lebanese girl, so thank you very much. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Bishop Emeritus David A. Zubik for his, for his decades of faithful service and his enduring commitment to the mission of the church. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, to be Bishop Emeritus David A. Zubik Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
I've had the privilege.
You didn't blow up.
Okay, thank you. I've had the privilege of being in this chamber on any number of occasions over the course of the last 50 years, and it's good to be here again today. Might I say, I have great admiration for all the members of council, all that you do for the, the people of, of the city of Pittsburgh. And I know that as Bishop Ekman has begun his beautiful ministry, that he will in fact continue to make sure that the church of Pittsburgh is a good friend and a partner to the leadership of trying to provide a good environment for all the people of our blessed city. Thank you very much, Councilman Kail, and thank you for, all of you, for this opportunity to be here with you today. God bless you all.
We'll be staying here for the photos. Anyone want to come up for the photo? Council?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Could everyone who's here for a week without driving come up? So there was a little bit of a mix-up. So the mayor was going to do a proclamation, and there was just a little bit of confusion. So I'm not doing it for him, but I just wanted to invite everyone up because everyone's here and wanted to celebrate the week without driving. So this proclamation was already presented down at the presser this morning, but I did want to have everyone come up and just remind everyone that it is indeed the week without driving. And just a few points about why this week is so important, right? We have here in the city roughly 15% of Pittsburghers do not own a car, right? And this covers everyone from our young people getting to school, our seniors, our folks with disabilities, and even just folks who choose not to spend the $12,000-plus or so a year that it costs to own and maintain a vehicle. And as we know, I think right now I'm actually very around this topic. There is so much good work being done at the city, so many folks here on council. We have our red light cameras now. We've got our Pogo membership at the city. There's just lots of advocacy around traffic calming. And so it's a really great time in the city of Pittsburgh to be representing and sort of an advocate for this cause. I want to thank, of course, Pittsburghers for Public Transit, Bike Pittsburgh, Access Mob, Age Friendly Pittsburgh, right? And all the folks who come around and come together each and every day to make sure that, you know, some of our most vulnerable have access to safe streets and reliable transit, right? But we know that it's an uphill climb, right? If anybody who has taken the bus, that's what the week without driving is about, right? Even if you could just one time, right? Just like one, you know, one time this week, take the bus somewhere that you wouldn't normally, that you normally would have driven, and see how long it takes, right? Just like do, you know, take the bus to an appointment and see how much longer it takes you to get there on the bus than it would in your car. Or ride a bike and get a feeling for how much safer you feel when you are in a dedicated bike lane versus when you're in the middle of the street, right? And how much less stress that causes the drivers who are trying to share the road, that you're sharing the road with. You know, right now, and I think we just saw this with this fight over the bus stops at the waterfront, right, that's in Homestead. But we just saw this where sort of folks with lots of money and lots of influence sort of feeling like they can just cut out transit riders, right? But, and I'm very glad that our county executive stepped in and dealt with that situation and that those bus stops are going to stay where they are. But the reality is, is our built environment, right? Places like the waterfront are built using our tax dollars, right? They are not, and they are for everybody. They're for everybody to use, not just people who have a car, right? So that feels, felt like maybe a small fight for some, but it was a big fight. And it's one that we won in just a matter of days. And that's because everybody rallied around, right? Elected officials, a zillion people got on the phone signing petitions, all that great work. And it's a slippery slope. And I think it's important that we show, you know, the development community, whatever it is, right? That that isn't going to fly here in Pittsburgh, right? Because we see at the federal level, they are cutting funding for what they call anti-car. You know, so federal funding is being cut. We see at the state level, we can't get our elected officials to, you know, put through dedicated transit funding. And I see that as, to be honest with you, kind of like a war on low-income people, on young people, on disabled people, and our seniors, right? By not recognizing the importance that that transit, you know, the importance of that transit funding. But it's also incredibly short-sighted, right? Because when we talk about growth, we talk about the city, you know, the city of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County as a whole. This is a region where we want people to move. We want businesses to come here. We want people to look at Pittsburgh and Allegheny County as an alternative to these places that are, you know, Silicon Valley, Tri-State area, Chicago, right? These big places that of course have transit. We want it to be a tourist destination. And the reality is, is that businesses don't want to come places where their employees have to drive to get a mile and a half to work. People don't want to move to cities where they have to own a car, own two cars to get like literally just across town, you know, something that should be a 20-minute bus ride, right? Tourists, like when was the last time you said, "Oh, I'm so excited to go visit this city because I get to rent a car there," right? It's super annoying. You don't want to rent a car when you come to visit a city. You want to come visit a city where you can just hop on the bus, hop on a bike, share, whatever you want to do, get around, enjoy, right? Have fun in the city. And that's what we need to do to grow Pittsburgh and the whole area, is to focus on transit. Because great cities have great transit, right? Great cities have bike access and safe streets for people to walk. And that's why great cities are so cool. And that's what I think Pittsburgh can be. So I want to thank everybody for coming here today. I don't know if anyone wants to say a few words? Yeah?
So the Week Without Driving was created by disability advocates to talk about the fact that a lot of us can't drive or can't afford to drive. And it's really easy to look at an event like this and think, "Oh, it's about disabled people." But disability is a natural and normal part of the human experience. The longer you live, the more likely it is you will become disabled at some point. You want to age in place in your house, and you hit a point that you can't drive anymore. You still want to stay in your house. Or you trip on a sidewalk crack and break your leg that you used for driving, and you can't drive for the next few months. You know, this is a normal thing. Disability is not bad, a bad word. It's not scary or other. When we build things for disabled people, we build things for everyone. You know, it's called universal design. You know, the ramps that you have on sidewalks for wheelchairs to get on, people with shopping carts, people with strollers. Think about that with public transit and sidewalk access, too. You know, it's not about me, it's about everyone. And so the Week Without Driving really tries to uplift the experiences of all folks who either currently rely on alternate methods of getting around or will one day need to do it. There is still plenty of time to take the pledge. We've got some of the city council folks here have taken the pledge. There's still room for more. I'm looking at you, De La Velle, you're my councilman. You should take the pledge. But if you go to weekwithoutdrivingpgh.org to sign up, to go even just a day or one trip without driving to see what it's like to get around, you know, this is so important for so many people.
Thank you so much, Alisa. I just want to make two points. One is that I want to celebrate the fact that today was announced that the mayor has included as part of the budget a bulk purchase of the Partner Pass, which is transit passes for all city employees that work downtown. And we hope that that remains in the budget. I think that's incredibly important and valuable. The Partner Pass is deeply discounted, and so there's obvious, there's a financial possibility incentive for people to participate. But the city can be, is a model, can be a model for developers, for employers, for schools to purchase in. And how many poor people are going to be taking transit if they have a free pass in hand? The second thing I want to just share is that Domi has been really doing phenomenal work around bus shelters. And we're really excited that they just put up a website for bus stop improvements, that people can now highlight where their stops need shelters and the people that are relying on the bus in those locations. So I want to encourage people to go there and make suggestions about where shelters should be installed. The last thing I want to say is over 60 organizations in the city have signed on to join us for the Week Without Driving. So could folks that are part of those organizations, just name yourself here? Because we really appreciate how they've amplified this movement and how it represents their constituencies. Go ahead.
I'm Anna from Pogo.
I'm Laura from Kinga Council.
Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Nemarest, Jonathan Nemarest Consulting.
Thank you so much. And then I'm going to turn it over to Age Friendly and Bike Pittsburgh, too.
Hi, I'm with Age Friendly Greater Pittsburgh. Our work is about making our region more inclusive and respectful of all ages and abilities. And so much of what Alisa said rings true for the Age Friendly movement as well. One thing I'll just name today is that Allegheny County has one of the oldest populations in the country. We have over 20% of our population is over the age of 65. And we know that with an older population, our communities were not built for aging in place or aging in communities. And being able to access your community without a car is such a huge part of what makes aging in community happen and possible. So I just want folks to remember that older people are transit users, are pedestrians, as much as younger people, disabled people, and onward. Thanks.
And my name is Seth Bush. I'm the advocacy manager for Bike Pittsburgh. Week Without Driving is about the fact that streets are for people, and we need our infrastructure to work for all people, not just drivers, but people who get around by walking, by biking, by wheeling in many different ways. Grateful for all the work that you do to invest in your districts, in our communities for that infrastructure. We're looking forward to seeing more as the years come and getting to Vision Zero, zero-traffic fatalities and serious injuries with further infrastructure investment.
May I? Yes. So I want to really thank everybody for advocating for the Week Without Driving and for encouraging us to take the pledge. I took the pledge. I had several weeks to prepare. The first thing I did Monday morning was get in my car and drive. My kid was late to school, didn't have another way there, and I screwed up, and I got back to my house, and I went, "Ah!" Because, and so I thank you, because it is very good learning skill. And I did not drive the rest of the day. And I just thought, "Oh, my God, now I have to put off errands" that I had not thought to do when, like, over the weekend, when I, you know, before I had the option of driving a car. And then today, I had the really good intention of taking a very easy bus, a bus to downtown that is, you know, on my corner, right? I mean, like, maybe 100 feet from my house, and pretty much would have taken me right here. And I missed the bus. And luckily, my employee who lives nearby hadn't already driven downtown, so at least we car pooled. So I'm just really off to a banner start to the week. And there was a time in my life, and I'll give a shout out because I have Bloomfield constituents here, when I lived in Bloomfield, and I was more in the habit, and I was younger, and I had more flexibility, where I would not drive my car for two weeks at a time because I could walk to the bank, I could walk to the grocery store. I could easily catch, I was more in the habit of taking the bus. So it's a great pledge to take. You don't need to wait for the week that's organized for all the publicity. I encourage all of us out there to go ahead and try it this week or any week because I think we know that so much of our city population, I'm sure people here know the numbers. I like to say like 30% of Pittsburghers don't have cars. And that's adults, right? But you throw in all the kids, right? I have a 19-year-old who, almost 19-year-old, who still hasn't gotten her driver's license because she's just grown up with the blessing of being on frequent bus routes. We have, where we've lived, luckily for us, it's not true of every street in the city, knock on wood, but she's been able to get everywhere she's needed to go on the bus. And so I appreciate, anyway, all of the work that you do. And I'm glad that we have this week to highlight the importance of transit. Thank you.
And I think, too, it's important to, you know, for the folks who, because, you know, and I have a lot in my district, too, who sort of are like, "Oh, you know, she hates cars." It's like, this is good for people in cars, too, right? Because every person who's not in their car, every person who's not driving their kid to school, every person who's on a bike is not in traffic, right? And so you are, you know, it makes less traffic in the city. It's really just a win-win to make these investments. So I don't know, if members want to come up and take a photo? Yeah?
And we have five proclamations to be read into the record.
Councilmember Shireland presents, "Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 22, 2025, to be Darren Morris Day in the city of Pittsburgh." Councilmember La Velle presents, "Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 27, 2025, to be Fifth Avenue High Class, sorry, Fifth Avenue High Class of 1965 Day in the city of Pittsburgh." Councilmember Warwick presents, "Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Pittsburgh hereby declares September 30, 2025, Women in Bio Day of Power." Councilmember Strasburger presents, "Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the October 6, 2025, as Patricia Shipansky Day in the city of Pittsburgh." And Councilmember Teresa Kell Smith presents, "Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby proclaim the month of September, 2025, to be Rail Safety Month in the city of Pittsburgh."
May we have a motion to approve all five proclamations?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All five have been approved. That takes us to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Elena Zaitsov.
Good morning, council members. I'm Elena Zaitsov. I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland. I'm president of the Oak Cliff Community Organization, which is a registered community organization, and I am representing that organization today. At the regular meeting on August 13, the organization voted unanimously to request that Councilwoman Bob Sharlin introduce and support legislation to change the zoning on parcel number 28N110 from residential to park. It's the Lawn Ophelia Stormwater Retention Park. This request is relevant to all of council, because council votes on zoning requests. Our reasons for this request are as follows. One, the city has already sold part of the park to the adjacent neighbor. A park zoning will make it harder to do so again. City planning told us that with a stormwater retention park there, it's unlikely the city will sell off part of the park. However, this park has three tiers, and the stormwater plumbing is only in the basin on the lowest part, with the top tiers adjacent to a house. Two, there's precedent from Oakland for this type of zoning change. The parcel that the Oak Cliff Community Playground now sits on was changed from residential to park, the same change we are requesting. Also, as a result of the Oakland Plan, the zoning of Zalima Park was changed to park. The Oakland Plan missed the rezoning we are requesting. Three, it will be easier to get amenities if it is rezoned to park. Four, throughout the process of the Oakland Plan, we were told zoning should match use, so change this zoning to match its use. First, I was told by a representative of Councilman Sharlin's office that they had to check with city planning about the language it would take. This is confusing, because one of Councilman Sharlin's first legislative acts was to get McKee Place rezoned for Walnut Capital Development. So I think they know how to word rezoning legislation. Then I was told by Sharlin's office that city planning told them to tell me, "We need to wait for the Oakland Plan, as parks and rec is the next topic to be addressed." As a member of the Oakland Task Force, I have seen the implementation of the Oakland Plan, and with the exception of rezoning, it moves at a snail's pace, possibly because of lack of funding, but this rezoning does not require funds. City council does not need city planning's approval for this, so let's get it done now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Roman Mason.
Hi, I'm Roman Mason, borough councilperson of Sharpsburg Borough. I live in Uptown. I go to Duquesne University, so that's why I have a quarterhouse there for when I'm at school, but there, I'm also on the Collaborative Justice Committee with Partnership of the City of Pittsburgh. Last week, I was going home from school, and there's these houses that sit on Forbes Avenue and Van Bram Street. It's the old Red's Bar, and there's another house there. I observed the guy coming out of the house, and shortly after that, he ends up falling to the ground and having a seizure. And I had to, knowing me being pretty responsible for a 20-year-old, I carry, I have Narcan in my car, so I went to my car, gave the man Narcan and revived him. The ambulance came and whatnot, but I would just like to say, we all say that we want the city of Pittsburgh to be an economic, like, development city and, like, attract companies and attract young talent here, with Duquesne University right there, Point Park, Chatham, pit down the street a little bit, things like that are not going to attract people to come here. Those two vacant houses are, I understand, there's several blighted properties throughout the city, and I understand that you guys are doing your best to get them torn down, but I would just say, if there's any way to speed up the red tape process of that, of these buildings having demo, intent demolition permits on them and not being demoed for more than a year or two years at this point, it's just, it's pretty sad. And if you want families and people to come to Duquesne University and see the, like, they're going, like, they're on tours, like, people aren't going to want to send their kids to when the only gas station in the city looks like the inner city of Chicago. Like, it's, you're never going to attract that talent. And everybody wonders why CMU are losing kids at the rate they are. It's not only because they're not the, they are one of the better schools, but it's because people just don't feel safe sending their kids there. And Pittsburgh is one of these safer cities, but little things like that is just not a great look. And for me to be 20 years old, having to do that, that's just, quite frankly, unacceptable, so.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Lawrenceville, Aluknow, India, which is an AI pilot city. Pittsburgh, 1950, 650,000 people, 2025, excluding the 30,000 in Oakland, students, 275, under Democratic Party leadership oversight. I'm a candidate for representing the Global Intelligence Society for Pittsburgh Mayor 2025 and President 2028, globalinformationintelligencenetwork.net. Concerns of council, which I share, is for the vote, about the vote, and local government democracy. Is the idea of democracy, "we, the people," natural or artificial, meaning of not biogenetic origin? The USA founders thought it natural, based on natural law, John Locke influence. I think that democracy is artificial. The history of humanity is overwhelmingly not "we rule, but I rule, one ring to rule them all." I think that democracy is a positive artificial. The USA founders, especially Jefferson and Madison, considered the 1783 Articles of Confederation and the 1789 US Constitution to be extensions of natural law. Consider Locke's two treatises of government. If so, then the political party system, especially the US American DPRP, polity stranglehold, is wuchin goa, that's African haza, for artificial. It's non-constitutional, one ring out of only two to rule them? If so, then the evidentially foundationless, no nomination papers on the ballot for the Allegheny County Election Division. Covering the city of Pittsburgh is jinko no, Asian Nahuango. It's artificial, one ring to bring them all in? If the US American Constitution is natural, then any computerized vote system that excludes in-person vote recording and VVVFW, vote-by-voter verification for whom checking, is a negative artificial, South American Espanol. One ring is more likely to find the people or not find the people? So anti-kunchlik, European Deutsch for artificial vote system must include in-person voting and VVVFW to avoid one ring to rule them all and in the darkness bind them. Do we have Sauron in the White House?
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Chris Maury.
Good morning, council members. I'm Chris Maury in Squirrel Hill, District Eight, here today, representing Informa Pittsburgh, a local news nonprofit covering, we, covering city council on a weekly basis. This week, we have 88 survey respondents representing all nine districts, who we have responses from about the issues discussed by council last week. With respect to adding past or present housing status as a protected class, 50% of respondents either somewhat or strongly supported adding that as a protected class, with 28% in opposition, either strongly or somewhat opposing. Councilwoman Coghill, during the standing committee meeting last week, you voted against recommending that resolution for passage today. We had five respondents from your district, three of whom strongly supported with two somewhat opposing. The remaining districts, for which we had a large response, or meaningful response, aligned with their council members' votes in the standing committee. One comment in support of the resolution from Carrick wrote, "There's no need for landlords to know if a person was ever homeless or used a shelter. They should not be able to ask these questions." However, in opposition, another respondent said, "If we're going to ban housing discrimination against the homeless, how do you suppose to do that or propose to do that? Are you proposing to cosign the lease for the applicant and pay if they default? Most landlords do credit checks. Will the city create a program to bring homeless and landlords together with a security deposit?" On the issue of kind of the discussion in standing committee on the potential for 311 to monitor social media, we asked readers kind of what preconditions would need to be met for, in order for them to consider that to be a good idea. 47% of respondents said that would never be a good idea, nor would they ever support such usage of social media, with the remaining issues or kind of preconditions being limiting to service complaints only, 37%, clear written policies, 36%, and a prohibition against use by law enforcement, 31%. A respondent from Point Breeze said absolutely no government monitoring of social media because of how many, regardless of how many rules you have around it, there is potential for abuse and retribution. And a respondent from Sheridan said social media is for public consumption, and having a government entity monitor what is being written or spoken online should be allowed. And thank you. And the full survey responses will be sent as part of the written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. My remarks today about the illegal skate park in Panther Hollow are directed to all council members except Anthony Coghill. He's the only council member to date who has the courage to support our community. I've come before this council on seven previous occasions to talk about this issue, and my theme has always remained the same, awaken your dignity. The illegal skate park has brought pain and suffering to the residents, disrupted their quality of life, and threatened their Italian heritage that generations have fought to preserve and protect. Each of you have your own views about dignity. Let me share mine and how it relates to the illegal skate park. Dignity is that which is noble and worthy within you. It flows from these seven components. One, valued self. This consists of self-awareness, self-esteem, self-love, self-confidence, self-respect, self-confidence, and self-worth. Why is the worth of the residents of our community any less than yours, when none of you would want an illegal skate park right next to your homes? Two, intensity. This involves being focused, patient, and wise, and seeing both the current picture and the bigger picture. Your own dignity is a part of the bigger picture of this illegal skate park. Three, strength of character. This involves the ideals and principles. What principles are you holding on to, and what messages are you giving young skateboarders? Are they to have fun, even if it brings harm to others? Have fun, but don't take responsibility? Have fun, because a self-serving end justifies the means. Four, consciousness. This word encapsulates that which you use to create your own reality, namely, your beliefs and your attitudes, your thoughts and your feelings, your choices and your decisions, as well as your desire, your imagination, and your expectation. What is it within your own consciousness that justifies the suffering of others? Five and six, spirituality. This involves the depths of your underst, of your relationship with two components combined, your soul and your spirit. What messages might you be hearing that justifies the suffering for the residents of our community? And seven, freedom. This component is a force inside of you that challenges you to become more of who you are. It involves courage. Summon your courage to end this injustice. Awaken your dignity and break your silence. Awaken your dignity and break your silence. Awaken your dignity and break your silence.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, council. Sam Gibson from Homewood. So, you know, I always like to come and, today, I want to give you all the reason why I continue to keep coming. I'm dealing with something in Homewood, with East Hills, Lincoln Larmour. Homewood consists of, Homewood North, South, and East. So a couple of weeks back, I sent you guys, I gave to you all's person at the front desk an invoice, and I did it on purpose. That invoice is because I created, because I think you all should be paying me for the services that I continue to do from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We talk about the balances down. Where? We talk about it's a beautiful city. Where? We struggling every day. So today, I found out after reading some of you all's bylaws. I'm asking a right to know. I like the text messages, the emails from you all's personal and work cell phones. I'd like to start with Ms. Camilla, who works over at the Roots Program. Her last name is A-L-A-C-A-R-O-N. David Jones, Ben, T-A-L-I-K. All city councils communication to that organization, to this city paid organization who is not out there. This is death to our people. If you say you love and you cherish your job and you working for the people, well, I question that. Mr. Smith, like his text messages and emails to this, to these people. Ms. Alicia West, who is Mr. David Jones's assistant. Every staff person who comes out there, who say they are quote-unquote "out in Homewood working," we would like those text messages and emails, because I have now gathered about 13 people, and about six of them are from the news channels. We all want to know what the conversation is being held, because I don't, we don't see the work happening. Now, I'd ask city council, if you guys would kind of just have a conversation about that invoice, because I also have retained a law firm. Now, I've tried to do this calmly, to my expectations. I've been here, speaking to you all. It is now, we do something together, or I put it all on blast, like I used to. What you guys say is uncouth and unrealistic, I'm going to bust the bubble right here. I would like the text messages and emails to Reverend Grayson's conversation to you all as well. I ask this because on Hamilton, four, about three years ago, you all brought up a homeless shelter. That homeless shelter, now we have people running around completely crazy, and we're dealing with it. So I need that. I'll send you all that email soon.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, city council. My name is Stormy Morris from McKeesport. I just wanted to make two public comments. The first public comment is about the young man who stabbed his classmates at Carrick High School. He was being bullied, and he had to defend himself. Now, I think it's very wrong of him to bring the knife to school. Everybody knows it's wrong. But sometimes, if you don't want to be a parent, someone will be a parent for you. I think it's wrong that the kids were allowed to bully this person and get hurt, and now they're the victims. I think that the bullying victim should be talked to and helped. My friend, Edith Singleton, she used to go to Carrick High School. She was bullied a lot because she dressed nice. She ended up having to transfer to Westinghouse High School. The bullying- The bullying didn't stop. They bullied her there, jumped her every day because she dressed nice. I'm just saying, if the parents don't want to be good parents and take care of the children, somebody else will. The second thing I want to talk about is, I was watching a news conference, and Corey O'Connor said something like, forty immigrants came to Pittsburgh, and these same forty immigrants got houses and stores in South Hills. How is that happening when we have a homeless problem in Pittsburgh? And usually, the homeless people are the taxpaying citizens. How can an outsider just come into Pittsburgh and get a house and a store in South Hills? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the high-rise up on Bedford with one hundred and ninety apartments. I wanted to bring to light that we, the residents in Katy River, are very sad. We have, one of our maintenance men, Lamont, was his last day was Wednesday. He said he was quitting because they don't pay enough for all the work that they do. I was able to stand up. Well, first, we had our president of our tenant council, who was Reggie House, who came down here and sang for you and talked about the GoFundMe program for him. Well, he had spoke, and then he said, anybody else? Well, I jumped up first, and I said to Lamont that I wanted to tell him that we were sad that he was leaving because he gave much respect, because sometimes at seven and six o'clock in the morning, there's old seniors, there's seniors coming down to ask him to do this and that. I never heard him say a sharp or harsh word to any of them, because the seniors, which Mr. Dr. Miller tells me, don't call them old people, but I'm one of them, so I think I can. The old people can get on your nerves, and I know that myself. I wanted to also say that, and I talked to Ms. Warwick, there's a lot of times I try to explain to you why it's offensive when we're speaking here at the podium, and you leave your seat and come and talk to people in the back. Now, you remember you came back, and Stormy had came, and you, I was sitting there, and you started talking, and I told you, please move. I got real mad. I got up and left. I mean moved, because I said, I'm telling you, you're wrong. We only got three minutes, and you run out and talk. But I also want you to know that Stormy at one time said that I was prejudiced, because I said that you let Tim speak, Tim Teasen speak, because he was like, he was like complected. She said I was prejudiced. But then she came to me before her birthday and said, I apologize, Ms. Brown. I see you're not wrong, and would you say happy birthday to me? And here it is, 2018, when she said for me to write her happy birthday thing, not write to say happy birthday. I wrote that, because you know, I say, if you see it, you believe it, you remember it. For, for, 2017, and I says, happy birthday, Stormy, and many more. See, that's what offends me, is that she's the one that swore, and you said we can't swear, and she swore at Dr. Miller. She accused him of sexually harassing him, but this last time she came, didn't she pat him on his behind? What is she doing? I want you to understand, when I come down here, I'm not coming down here for me. I'm coming down for all the people. And when the lawyers come, and you got your powerful people...
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please.
Still morning. Good morning. My name is David Tessitore, Banksville District Two, council. And I see three things, four things, actually, that I can comment on briefly. The first is, I did bike down here and did come on transit, so I appreciated the initial part of the proceedings. There are three structural issues that I see, because that's what I'm about. I'm about trying to find structural solutions that saves you a lot of heartache. First one we heard off on was dealing with parks, and we hear about with Panther Hollow with parks. When we have six agencies dealing with the management and administration of parks issues, we have too many cooks spoiling the broth, and I expect over the coming time to be able to work with council on this. The other issue which was raised here of getting information, the open government amendment that I wrote and got on the ballot till, just before it was removed, the day before it went to print, was the open government amendment, which would have included those provisions actually in it. And I do hope that in some time in the future, I'll be able to do more on that with council. And finally, in the year 2000, we had the Neighborhood USA Conference here, and at one of the sessions, there was a gentleman who passed around a picture of an old house, somewhat similar to, I guess, what the young fellow was talking about earlier. It was a drug den, and he asked, what should we do about it? And he was told by everybody, tear it down, tear it down. So then he passed around another picture of this beautiful house, and everybody was awing about how nice that looked. He says, yeah, that's my house. It's the same house. My point is that rather than tearing down and throwing away structures that can be rehabilitated, that's what we need to be doing, because otherwise, a municipality which is proud of how many of its homes and buildings it can eliminate, has a wish for municipal suicide. And that's what's been happening in the city of Pittsburgh, as we followed the general policy of moving everything out to the airport, moving all of our commerce out to the airport, instead of moving the airport into the city, which I fought for during the nineties, took as high as the state Supreme Court and U.S. Court of Appeals. So these are things that I expect to be bringing to council in issues in the future, hopefully the near future, and we will see what's happening. Anyway, I thank you for your attention. These are issues that need to be addressed. Again, we're looking for structural solutions. That takes a lot of weight off of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of National Government and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2292, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 5804 Bryant Street at no cost to the city. Bill 2301, Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Deed Pursuant to the Somerset Cooperation Agreement of 2002 by in between the URA of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh for the sale of seven parcels located in the Fourteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, designated in a deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 88L, Lot 150, Block 88M, Lot 200, Block 88H, Lot 161, Block 128R, Lot 100, Block 128R, Lot 200, Lot 129A, Lot 160, and Block 129N, Lot 40, Council District Five at no cost to the city. Bill 2302, Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Deed by in between the URA of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh for the sale of 21 parcels in the 10th, 14th, 16th, and 24th wards of the City of Pittsburgh, Council Districts 1, 3, 5, 7, and 9, to be dedicated as public green space at no cost to the city.
And Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 2314, Resolution Authorizing Council's Consent to an Extension Pursuant to 92205D of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, the zoning code of the deadline for the planning commission to act on Bill Council, to act on Council Bill 2025-1925 and 2025-1926.
Given this is extending a zoning deadline, we can actually do a roll call vote?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Sorry. Sorry? I've lost my place.
So we're on Bill 2314, which is under Councilwoman Kail Smith's committee. She's extending the zoning deadline.
Thank you. Yes. Aye. Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2290, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Soil Engineering Solutions LLC for Expert Witness Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an Amount Not to Exceed $6,569.60 Over One Year. Bill 2291, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Nevada Burrell in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,475.00 Over One Year and Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Parked Vehicle from an Accident with the City Public Works Vehicle on January 19, 2022. Bill 2293, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended in title. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program, and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund Tip by $50,000, Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $10,750, and Increasing Swindell Bridge Tip by $785,000. $745,750 of which is reimbursable by the Federal Highway Administration and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation at no cost to the city. Bill 2306, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Clark Hill to serve as Bond Counsel for the Purpose of Rendering Any and All Opinions with Respect to the Bonds and Preparing Such Additional Documents as May Be Necessary. Total Cost Shall Not Exceed $133,000 Over Three-Year Period with Two One-Year Options to Extend the Contract and Shall Be Paid Using Proceeds from the Debt Issuance. Bill 2307, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements, RT Lawrence Corporation, for the Provision of a Remittance Processing System. The Cost of the Remittance Processing Solution Over Three Years Shall Not Exceed $45,477.26.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2297, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with HDR Engineering, Inc., for Costs Associated with Final Design of the Swindell Bridge Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $3,618,085.38, an Increase of $2,444,157.81, reimbursable at 95%. Bill 2298, Resolution Amending Resolution 309 of 2024, which provided for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, and right-of-way phases of the Swindell Bridge construction project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $4,585,000, an Increase of $785,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 95%. And the Municipal Share of Commonwealth Incurr costs not to exceed $7,000, no increase from the previously executed agreement. Bill 2299, Resolution Providing for an amended agreement or construction services with power contracting company for the CBD Phase Four project at a cost thereof not to exceed $3,829,410.04, an Increase of $7,208.84 from the previously legislated contract authorization, 610 of 2022. Bill 2300, Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the Dedication of Thirty-Five Parcels to the Public Right-of-Way in the First, Third, Seventh, Eighth, Eleventh, Twelfth, Thirteenth, Twenty-First, and Twenty-Second Wards of the City, Council Districts 1, 6, 7, 8, and 9, at no cost to the city. Bill 2303, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Tree Pittsburgh to Conduct Urban Forestry Programming in Amount Not to Exceed $50,000. Bill 2304, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Land Force to Conduct Urban Forestry Programming in an Amount Not to Exceed $50,000. Bill 2305, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements or the Use of Existing Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Passack Plus MTR for the Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Amen Park at a Cost Not to Exceed $327,815. And Bill 2311, Resolution Authorizing an Extension of the Term of the Acting Director of Mobility and Infrastructure for 119 Additional Days to Run Through February 1, 2026.
Bill 2311 is also an extension. Can we do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Bill has been passed. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wilson presents Bill Number 2294, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Planning to Enter into, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Evolve Environment Architecture to Provide Services to Create Historic District Design Guidelines for the Mexican War Streets in the Manchester Historic Districts at a Cost Not to Exceed $37,500. Bill 2295, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Practical Preservation LLC to Provide Historic Preservation Services to Complete an Updated Architectural Inventory and National Register Assessment of Civil Rights History for the Manchester Historic District and to Revise the National Register Form, Cost Not to Exceed $40,000. And Bill 2296, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Site under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as Westinghouse Park, located at 320 North Mertland Street in the Point Breeze neighborhood, Fourteenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Thank you. And I have three. We could first do the two communications?
Council President Lavell presents Bill Number 2308, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended September 26, 2025. And Bill 2309, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay requests on behalf of the Mayor's Office for Paul Scott and Sidney Cooper per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018.
We need a motion to rehearse and file.
No move.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, the bill's rehearsed and filed. Now we have one valid petition.
Bill 2310, Petition from the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh Requesting a Public Hearing Before City Council Relative to Passing Sanctuary City Legislation for Pittsburgh to Make the City a Truly Welcoming City for All by Codifying in Law That All City Public Services Should Be Made Accessible to Everyone Regardless of Immigration Status, Origin, Color of Skin, Sexual Orientation, Religion, or Language. The Legislation Should Make it Illegal for All City Agencies, Pittsburgh City Police to Collaborate with the Immigration Customs Enforcement, ICE, and to Disclose Information About the Immigration Status of Any Person. similar to Sanctuary City Legislation passed by Cities such as Chicago, San Francisco, Philadelphia, and Others. The Proposed Legislation is Intended to Help All Immigrants in All Vulnerable Communities Feel Welcome and Safe in Pittsburgh. The Petition is Valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
Therefore, we need a motion to hold for a public hearing.
No move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill will be held for a public hearing. That takes us to Reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 2274, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for September 22, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2241, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 857 of 2023, Effective December 27, 2023, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget: The Proposed 2024 Community Development Program and the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing Facility Improvements, Sports Facilities by $180,000 and Increasing Facility Improvements, Recreation and Senior Centers by $180,000." Bill 2245, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter into, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, a Lease Agreement or Agreements with Bike Share Pittsburgh, Inc. to Utilize a Portion of that Certain City-Owned Parcel, 29M15102, Fourth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, 90 Wormser Way, Council District 3, for the Purpose of Placing and Maintaining a Shipping Container to be Used for Storage of Equipment at no cost to the city. And Bill 2246, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to Document Local Cooperation and the Housing Authority's Agreement to Make Payments in Louvre Taxes for Bedford Dwelling's Phase III Housing Development.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor, the passes of the bill. Will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill 2275, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for September 22, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2238, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Warner Group K-9 Services LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,500 for Payment of One K-9 Unit. Bill 2239, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, into an Agreement or Agreements with Kilo Three Consulting Agency LLC for Trainer-led On-Site K-9 Training Cost Not to Exceed $8,500 Over One Year.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor, the passes of the bill. Will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill 2276, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for September 22, 2022, September 22, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2243, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into Certain Temporary Construction Easements in order to Advance the Fraser Street Steps Replacement Project at no cost to the city. Bill 2244, Resolution Amending Resolution 562 of 2019, which authorized the Mayor, the Director of Public Works to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and ATC Group Services LLC, ATC, for Architectural and Engineering Design Services related to the Stormwater Management and Renovation of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Firing Range by Increasing the Total Spend by $380,740 for a New Not to Exceed Amount of $750,000.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor, the passes of the bill. Will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is passed finally. And that moves us to Councilman Robert Sharland, presenting the Committee on Human Resources.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill 2277, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for September 22, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2242, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title VI Conduct, Article V, Chapter 65104, by Adding the Definition for the Protected Class of Housing Status, Amending 65903, to Include Past or Present Housing Status as a Class Protected from Housing Discrimination as well as Simplifying 65903 by Not Listing Each Protected Class in Each Subsection.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I wanted to be clear why I voted no on this last week. I voted no because the very commission that's supposed to be looking after people's rights came to this table and in the introduction, I guess he's the director, I can't remember his name, but it said, you know, that they found it very disturbing, especially in the South Hills. And without any proof, without any evidence whatsoever. So, this is why I voted against it. I guess I lost complete faith in the commission. I, I can't understand why would, they would say such a thing at the table with no, no evidence, no proof, nothing. I asked them, you know, so. So that's why I was frustrated with them. That's why I voted against it. Of course, I'm not against, of course, I'm against people prejudging and, you know, discriminating against people who are homeless. But I lost faith in the commission and I have serious questions for the commission and serious questions as to why they would make such an allegation to Icefield, directed at my district. And he actually even said Brookline. So, so anyway, I'll vote for it today out of the spirit of it. You know, it's not why I voted against it last week. I voted it because of the messenger and the people who are trying to enforce it. They come to the table and they insult my district at the same time asking us to pass something that they're trying to protect people's rights for. So, very disappointed in them. I'd like to call post-agenda on them, not at this moment, but I want to look further into it and see exactly what they're about because I don't want people coming to this table without facts insulting my district. So, that's why I voted against it. But in the spirit of it, of course, I don't want anybody discriminating against anybody who was homeless. I just didn't like the messenger. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. And I want to echo Councilman Coghill's concerns is that the commission is supposed to be very neutral and look into all things. And this is not the first time they've come out publicly and made a comment and statement. They did it back when I had legislation forward and they issued a statement to the media without even talking to me. So I actually think what we need is maybe not a post-agenda, but maybe an investigation into the commission. So I'll talk to you about that after this. But I just want to make sure that people understand that that commission is supposed to be very neutral and, and they're supposed to be able to look at things very objectively. And, and I, I think this is something, I voted for it last week. I'll vote for it again today. And, but I do think that we need to have some better, more in-depth conversations about the direction of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, just like to follow up. I want to remind the commission that I've actually helped homeless people get housing, okay? I don't know what they've actually done. I'd like to know what they've done other than just.
End jobs.
Say it from the pulpit, you know. So, I'm not sure exactly what they do. It seems to me after questioning them that there's no real enforcement mechanism in place. It's just, you know, that's, that's what we say. And, and I don't know who's going to contact all these landlords and tell them that you're not allowed to do this anymore? Is there something in writing? I just don't get it, I guess. I, I, I get the stance, I get the position, but without any enforcement, why even have it, is my question. So, so, yeah, I look forward to talking with you further, Councilwoman Kail Smith, and getting to the bottom as to why they come to the table with preconceived notions and actually say it on air without any evidence. I really need to know that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Yeah, I was, I was not going to speak to this today, but I, as I said, yes, last week, I, I've worked closely with the Commission on Human Relations through several different leaders, directors. And I, I see, I see its worth every day. I see that, you know, they, while a lot of what they enforce is not proactively enforced, we don't have the staff, they don't have the staff or the ability to, just knowing that there are rules on the books that those who are being discriminated against in any way can point to or their advocates or lawyers can point to and say, this is not okay. And there's recourse locally is incredibly important. And I am endlessly sympathetic to the frustration that, that Councilman Coghill has expressed. And I guess what I'd like to offer as I'm working with the commission on some new legislation is to sit down and have a conversation with the councilmen, with the two members of the commission who were, or the, the staff of the commission who were represented last week, if he be amenable, and sit down and have a conversation not only about the legislation that I plan to introduce next Tuesday, but also, you know, to, to, to clear up some, some of the, some of the words that were said last week and to move forward with an understanding of what the commission does and its, its place in the city as an independent organization. So, I'd like to make that offer publicly.
I don't know that they are independent, that's the problem.
Same with Councilwoman Kail Smith as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
No, I want to thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. And, you know, it was your comment last week that made me decide to vote for this today, that you're right. Being that there's no enforcement, there's nothing they're really going to do. They're not going to go investigate themselves. I found it to be kind of like, what's the sense of it? But in reality, I agree with you. You know, at least it's on the books. At least it's something that somebody can point to if they do find themselves discriminated against and decide to take action. So, for that reason, and I, I very much look forward to the conversation with you and the commission and to find, just, just to find a little more about them because I, I really don't know what I saw last week I didn't like. the conversation with you and the commission and to find, just, just to find a little more about them because I, I really don't know what I saw last week I didn't like. Um, so, you know, I look forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to just clarify for the record. I mean, my understanding of it is that you, the there is an enforcement mechanism in that you can file a complaint with the commission, right? If you're being discriminated against, whether it be unemployment or housing or, you know, whatever that may be. Um, uh, and then your complaint is evaluated by the commission itself. And after that rigorous evaluation process, if the complaint is deemed to have merit, then um, then i- an investigation can move forward and I think that can take different forms, but it is, as the councilwoman said, and I appreciate your comments, councilwoman, it is uh, there isn't the capacity to proactively go out and seek out, right, like violations? But it is there uh, for residents in the city should they feel, so that they don't simply have to, their only recourse is just to hire an attorney and then maybe, you know, deal with the discrimination that way. We do have that here at the city for our residents and uh, and uh, yeah, it's a good thing. Um, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any further conversation?
If none, then the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith presenting the Committee of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. If it's okay, I'd like to register aye votes for the remaining bills on the table.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kale Smith presents Bill number twenty-two eighty, reported a committee on recreation, youth and senior services for September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-one ninety-four, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to name the playground within Towns and Park the Bill Coleman Memorial Playground. Bill twenty-one ninety-five, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to rename Herschel Field to Bessie Miller Field. Bill twenty-one ninety-six, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to rename the baseball softball field at Banksville Park from Tower Field to Bill Mullen Field.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of passing the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill twenty-two eighty-one, reported a committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology for September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-five-eight, resolution amending resolution eight seventy-seven of twenty twenty-four, authorizing the mayor, the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Office of the Mayor to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto would encapsulate now doing business as essential to upgrade the city's customer relationship management system and our related capabilities and processes by increasing the approved amount by thirty thousand dollars for a total cost not to exceed one million one hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-three cent over three years, subject to appropriation by City Council in future budget years.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye on twenty-two eighty-one and no on twenty-five-eight.
There's only one bill in the committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm on the wrong committee.
You're a no vote.
You're a no vote for tw- for twenty-five-eight?
Yes, no for twenty-five-eight, yes.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
No.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, two noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally, and that finally that takes us to Councilman Carl Mosley presenting the Committee on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill number twenty-two seventy-nine, reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-one seventy-three, resolution amending resolution five forty-three of twenty twenty-two entitled resolution authorizing the mayor and the city of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a cooperation agreement with the U R A in order to receive a grant from the Pennsylvania Budget Office Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the renovation of Warrington Recreation Center in the amount not to exceed one million five hundred thousand, one million five hundred thousand dollars in authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose to update accounting information for the local capital match.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions, Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Warwick and then Councilman Mosley.
You might as well take a seat. I just want, thank you. Um, I just want to first thank the clerk's office for ordering the new curtains. I think these are the first ones since the original ones, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so they look amazing and so thank you, Council President and Madam Clerk for the new curtains and chambers. Um, and there's a couple of things. I have to call for a couple of post agendas. One, I call one every year for mental health, so I'm going to call one for mental health and I'll, I'll call for that in a minute. One is for nonprofits in the city of Pittsburgh and there's, I really want to talk about the influence that they have on our budget and, and projects in the city. Um, sometimes over residents and so I, I'm not certain how I want to phrase it, but I'll get to that in a minute. And uh, one, I have a request from a group of people who are requesting a post agenda on P N C Park and the ownership of the Pirates. And I really, I'm going to call for that, but I don't know if I'm going to schedule it, but I think you all know it's a person who used to work in the mayor's office that asked for, requested it. And so I'm going to request it and then talk to him to find out if I really need to have it. Um, but I'm doing it because he's, he sent me several texts today requesting it or several phone calls requesting it. Um, but I also want to talk a little bit about the, um, before I call for all those post agendas, I want to talk a little bit and I hope Councilman Coghill doesn't mind about the incident that happened in Carrick this past week. There has been so much happening with our kids in the city of Pittsburgh and we spend a tremendous amount of money trying to avoid all the issues that are happening. But we are only a small portion of what needs to happen here. We really do need, you know, some changes in C Y F. We need some changes in the school district and we need some people to take bullying seriously and follow policies and procedures and to make sure that kids are safe wherever they are. And whether it's in their home, whether it's on the streets or whether it's in their schools. And so I'm grateful because after talking to Councilman Coghill, I know he's going to have a committee or something. We're going to meet and talk about what his next steps are going to be and that he is taking the lead on this. But overall, I'm grateful that also for Dan Freeson and a team of attorneys ready to help the parents and anyone who's been bullied in the Pittsburgh Public Schools are um, having some issues. And, and there's a group of, you know, actually um, attorneys that I've heard of myself that have done a lot of things in that, in those areas and including helping other school districts. So, with that said, I would just say that I'm going to not say a whole lot about that today because I'm going to wait for, you know, Councilman Coghill's meeting and for um, to hear from these attorneys. But I do want to say that overall, we have seen kids bullied and with the comments that you see on all the media, and I understand sometimes things are exaggerated and I understand sometimes things are not exactly that we're hearing. But there is an awful lot of stories and an awful lot of pain that's occurring within our schools. And it's not okay. It's occurring in our streets, it's occurring in our schools, it's occurring in children's homes and some children don't even have homes. So, it's all those things and I feel like, you know, everybody wants to talk about how Pittsburgh's failing and how kids are failing and how horrible this generation is. Well, we raised the, the generation raising a lot of these kids. And so I just want to say that for the kids, just to know that there's hope. We're trying to do whatever we can. We're going to do some things to make sure the kids have hope and hold on and that the parents know. But I don't want any parent or any child to fear going to school. I don't want them to fear that they're going to be, bullying's one thing, but this is, I mean, outright, you know, the, the kids are being attacked. I mean, it's, it's not just a little like, hey, calling somebody a little name or something and, and sometimes even that is, is just horrendous. But it's just what our kids are going through. It's just something that we need to take very seriously and so I actually think we um, have some programs for, and some prog- some things I'm going to talk to Councilman Coghill about, things that we have to look out for the interests of kids, but I think it's going to be a very deep conversation. And I, my heart is hurting for that, for the people, yes. They were all kids that were involved, so my heart hurts for all of them. And my heart does hurt for the kid that did the stabbing. I feel like he's a child and he's in prison. And so all these people talk about advocating and not having a Schuman Center and not having places to go because kids don't belong. Well, kids don't belong in prisons either. And so now we have a kid in prison and multiple kids in prison because we don't have a place in Schuman Center. We have a place that now holds twelve beds for all Allegheny County and our kids have no place to go, so they're forced, when they do something wrong, into a prison with adults that have done some horrific and lifelong crimes. So, I, I, you know, I don't want to hear people telling me how great it is and how much they advocate and how much they care about the community and the kids and everything, and then you turn around and you don't, you don't even do anything to make sure they have a safe place to go. So, I think we're going to have some very big conversations and some serious conversations, but I'm going to wait till Councilman Coghill, I'm going to shut my mouth now, but it's hard. I'm going to wait until Councilman Coghill has his meeting and uh, the attorneys have their meetings and talk to people too. But, so with that said, I'm going to call for a post agenda on the ownership of P N C Park and the ownership of the Pirates. That's one post agenda. It's a motion.
Second?
Second. That's a great idea.
You think it's great? I don't know what I'm getting myself into, so I, I might not ever schedule it, but just so you know. Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And a post agenda on mental health for October, which I usually do.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a third post agenda, and this, I will schedule nonprofits in the city of Pittsburgh and funding.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any councilwoman?
Thank you. That, I think that's it, right? Did I call for three?
Yes.
Listen, if we schedule one of them, it'll be a miracle.
All right, Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yes, thank you. I would like to call for a post agenda on options for increasing revenue for the city of Pittsburgh.
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
I can't wait to have this conversation.
Any opposed? We'll get, we'll work with the clerk to get that scheduled. I'm assuming you want to have it done prior to budget discussions.
Um, probably, yeah.
Uh, Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment um, to send out heartfelt condolences to the family of Derek Hemby, uh, affectionately known as Big D, owner of the Galaxy Lounge in Homewood, uh, who passed away from cancer um, over the weekend and uh, who was a, a good friend, a great supporter. Um, you know, as well as a leader in, in, in the Homewood community. So, I know uh, the entire community is hurting right now. You know, with that loss, he fought a brave and valiant fight, you know, a- against cancer. So, again, I just wanted, you know, to send love and light um, and heartfelt condolences to his family, friends and loved ones.
Thank you. Anything else from members? Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to say first and foremost, Councilwoman Kale Smith, I welcome you with open arms with any help you can give me. You have a lot of experience with the school district in the past and I've seen you kick off the toughest of kids out of Mount Washington. So, all I have to do is post you up there, I think, every, every morning. Uh, once you retire, we'll be fine. But um, so no, I, I welcome uh, your, your input. I welcome your, you know, um, involvement. And to that subject, I will say, you know, it's easy for us to throw our hands up and say, oh, that's a school district problem, right? Uh, it's happened inside the school. They're their own taxing body. However, you know, when they walk outside that school, then it's our responsibility, right? So, and I, you know, maybe I, I'm naive to this, I guess, but it, it seems like there was never a good working relationship between the school board or school district and the city of Pittsburgh. And I at least want to change that or start the conversation around the safety of those kids because, you know, I will tell you, for me and my district, the number one reason why people do not want to move to the city of Pittsburgh and like it or not, it's because of our school district. And, you know, and if people can't feel safe going to school, we have no chance. We could have the best revenues, we could think of new revenues, we could do a million things. But if you're, if you can't send your kids to our schools and have them feel safe, it's all for naught. So, so I hope to engage with the school district in many ways, with the school police, the school district, the superintendent, Councilwoman Kale Smith, and try to um, figure something out where we can help them, I hope. I'm hoping to help them in some way, I guess. And, and I know the Pittsburgh police have been up there over the last two mornings and, you know, eventually that will die down and we don't have the personnel to be there every day. So, we have to uh, think of new ways and new initiatives and I want the people in my district who have children going to Pittsburgh Public Schools as I did to know that they're at least going to be safe. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, I did just want, with, with regard to that, Councilman, uh, when you have that meeting, uh, I encourage you to connect with the folks working on the safe passages. Uh, I believe they're in Carrick. I'm not sure, but I'm sure that they're working on this.
They are.
Um, you know, and we had a posted, they're really doing fantastic work over the past two years, really exceptional. And obviously incidences, right, you can't, but um, um, and you know, one, one thing just with regard to what the Councilwoman said, it was very disappointing uh, to see our media here in Pittsburgh splash that child's picture all over the news.
Yes.
I think that is highly inappropriate. Um, you know, these are kids. And uh, it's a horrible incident and, you know, having your picture now for the rest of that boy's life, right? You Google his name and that, that, that is going to come up because it was splashed all over the news and I don't know if there's, I don't know what the rules are around that or the, the, the etiquette among the media, but um, I think that um, I understand that if it bleeds, it leads, but uh, I think when it comes to minors, we should, you know, I, I would hope that our media would have a little bit more um, care and compassion. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Anything else, members? If not, we have meeting announcements. This afternoon at one o'clock, Council will hold an executive session on bills twenty-two sixty-six, twenty-two ninety, as they relate to litigation. Also, this afternoon at one-thirty, Council will hold interviews for the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October first, at ten a.m., Council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at nine. On Thursday, October second, at eleven a.m., Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill nineteen seventy-one regarding the naming of Room nine oh two in the city county building to the John R. Civic Conference Room. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. Also, on Thursday at one-thirty, Council will hold a cablecast post agenda discussion on Duquesne Light Storm Response, which will be chaired by Councilwoman Barbara Warwick. Also, please note that the cablecast post agenda on inclusionary zoning report originally scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the sign up form on the Council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty-one thirty-eight. Uh, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.